The roll call, please.
Andy Macon.
Here.
Dave Huntune.
Here.
Eric Curtin here. Owen Gambrell.
Here.
Chris Souza.
Here.
Tom Silveira.
Yes.
The minutes from January fourteenth will be read into the record in February twenty-fifth meeting. And the case, the first case that we're going to hear will be the thirty-two O'Keefe Drive. Do you read that into the record?
Did you want to handle these other matters first?
Yeah.
Run from...
The continuances.
Just call the other cases.
Sure.
By name and address.
Yeah. Petition of John Gullison, fifty-nine Aquatic Gab.
That's right. I'm looking over that for it.
Good evening. Jay Lynch on behalf of the applicant. I spoke to Mr. Kane before the meeting. We're going to have to re-advertise this application, and we're also revising the application to remove the dimensional relief that's presently before you. So I, we may want to continue this for probably two months because we're going to have to go back to the Technical Review Committee and Planning Board before we get back to you.
March thirty-one?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth? Do you need a motion on that? Motion?
Yes.
Do you need a motion to continue it to the March twenty?
Motion to continue the Gullison application until March twenty-third.
I got a first, do I have a second?
March twenty-fourth. March twenty-fourth, sorry. A second?
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Petition of Atlantic Beach Suites LLC by Dave Martland. Wave Avenue.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, that particular petition, as you know, has been before the board for several months. They're working out some differences with the group of people that are in opposition to it. And it's also going to be re-advertised for Development Plan Review so that that would need to be continued to the February meeting, February twenty-fifth.
So motion to continue it to the twenty-fifth of February?
Continue to February twenty-fifth.
Motion to continue the Atlantic Beach Suites application to February twenty-fifth.
A second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Petition of Atlantic Beach LLC by Sean Lushard for twenty-eight Aquatic Gab. Same situation, Jack?
No, actually, the applicant has requested that that matter be withdrawn without prejudice. They sent me an email today requesting that.
So I need a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes. Motion and a vote.
Motion to withdraw without prejudice, the petition of Atlantic Beach Suites LLC.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Petition of Exit Strategy LLC, nine ninety-five West Main Road.
That's right, I mean.
Ready?
You ready?
Okay.
Thank you.
Both a special use permit and a variance. Petition of Acacia Newport LLC by Attorney Jeremiah Lynch.
That's right.
So we're going to go Acacia first?
Okay, with all that being... And we'll hear the thirty-two O'Keefe Drive.
Petition of Acacia Newport LLC by Attorney Jeremiah Lynch for special use permit from Sections eleven oh six to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Watershed Protection District, Zone One. Said real estate is located at thirty-two Acacia Drive South and further identified as Lot one seventy-eight and Tax Assessor's Flat one oh nine.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Jay Lynch on behalf of the owner and applicant this evening. The matter that is before you tonight is a special use permit for construction in the Zone One Watershed Protection District. What the applicant is proposing to do is demolish an existing two-family structure on the site and rebuild a single-family dwelling that will comply to all the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. In addition to the reconstruction of the single-family dwelling, the applicant is going to remove an existing septic system on-site, and the new house is going to be connected to a public sewer. So we're going to have that economic, environmental benefit to the site. And to give you a little bit of background, this is at the bottom end of Acacia, south in Middletown. It is immediately adjacent to the reservoir to the, to the east. And it butts the property, the City of Newport, who owns the reservoir. To give you a little bit of background, we have been before the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission for advisory opinions. Both of those boards provided favorable recommendations on the proposal to the zoning board. Both of those, the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, also included the standard conditions regarding use of fertilizers on the site, no hazardous materials on the site, and we're agreeable to incorporating all of those conditions in any approval that you might give us this evening. I do have one witness, Lynn Small from Northeast Engineers. She will go through the project, pointing out the issues that we're facing with drainage, location in the Zone One Watershed District, Protection District, and the design elements that she put in to promote and protect the water quality in the area.
Can you, can you just tell us the history of the lot first? Was there ever a house there?
Yes. This has got, this has got a unique history on it. At one point, there were two separate lots. The current property, which is a two-family, once was a condominium. There was a second building immediately to the west that was also part of the condominium complex. It was, at one point, it was a timeshare development on the site, on two separate lots. So what we have now is the two-family dwelling, two condominium units. That is going to be removed, and in its place, the single-family dwelling is going to be constructed. The, there is an existing tennis court on the site. That was once part of the common elements for the condominium development. That's going to be retained by the single-family dwelling. Also, the pool will retain as part of the single-family use.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Raise your right hand, please. Swear to tell the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
State your name and address for the record.
Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, fifty-five John Clock Road. My office is doing the survey for the property, and we've done the proposed conditions plan. We did bring this before the TRC and the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission last night. The proposal includes the demolition of an existing two-family home and the reconstruction of a new single-family home with attached garage. We will, the footprint, overall footprint and impervious area is higher than existing conditions by approximately a thousand to twelve hundred square feet. However, we have incorporated in the design water quality treatment system, which you have no water quality provisions under current conditions. Other environmental benefits that we have for this redevelopment includes the abandonment of the existing septic system on-site. That's the dashed area that you see between the proposed dwelling and the pool. That'll, that's an old trench system. We'll be abandoning that and putting in a new sewer pump station, which will include a forest main up to Bliss Mine Road. The owner intends to also, at some point, abandon the septic system for the lot just west of the site that you're, you're here for tonight. So that pump station will be designed to eventually include the flow from that residence as well. So that's an additional environmental benefit that we get from this redevelopment. There will be no other work that's proposed on-site. The impervious surfaces will remain the same. We are before you because we're in the Watershed Protection District. You can see that that dashed line that runs through the house, that's the two-hundred-foot offset line. So because of that, we're also subject to CRMC approval. So after, hopefully, we receive approval tonight, we'll be able to go forward with that additional application to CRMC for their review. Their review will be basically reviewing the impacts on the coastline that you have here, much like yours. From an environmental standpoint, this project is a benefit to the community and the coastline. From a zoning standpoint, we will be bringing the existing non-conformity into conformance. Where we encroached the property lines at the front corner right now, we'll be fixing that under the proposed conditions. We have municipal water in this area. I don't know if I mentioned that, but it was kind of a pretty straightforward project. I don't know if you have any other questions.
Do you have any questions?
So I think it's called the initial, maybe, the additional drainage features that were on the site to deal with the runoff such as the rain garden that you have on?
Yeah, I think I briefly mentioned that we will be incorporating water quality treatment for the impervious surfaces for the project. Under the current conditions, we have no provisions for water quality treatment. The Planning Board did ask us to pull that water quality treatment device a little bit closer to the structure, just to maintain greater separation from the coastline. So we'll be bringing that rain garden in closer to where the end of the proposed grading changes are. Then you'll have the water quality feature that will kind of go at the bottom of that slope.
There's only two units over there, I had?
There were about, on this lot, two units.
And there was always two lots, or did it get subdivided?
At one point, they were merged, but they could never fully combine it. If the assessor for tax purposes assessed it as one lot, but the solicitor and the assessor will start this process and confirm that usability is all on separate tax laws.
And the different buildings have different septic systems as, right now?
That is correct.
So each building is served by its own septic? And is the other building going to be torn down also, or?
Well, it's under ownership. Your, this parcel, adjacent parcel, and also renovate that structure, whether it's going to be a tear metal or renovation, but I'm sure what this law, if there is, if their plan is to connect the sewer, that building to the all the sewer, that's how we're going to do it.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I don't have any other witnesses. I think we've submitted...
Anybody in the audience want to speak in favor or against the petition? Seeing none of them, close the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've demonstrated that this project is going to improve water quality in this Zone One Watershed Protection District by the removal of the existing septic and connecting to a public sewer. We have put in features that are going to improve the on-site condition. So we asked the board for a favorable vote, vote this evening.
Do we have the Conservation Commission's letter into the record or anything? Well, I think we, I think those are the obvious issues, right?
They, they should be part of the motion, all of them. Conservation Commission.
Do we enter that as exhibit?
I would make the...
Usually when you make a motion, you incorporate the recommendations from the Conservation Commission and Planning Board as conditions.
To the motion, yeah.
Yeah. Keeping in mind that that's an advisory opinion. So if you wanted to go through it, and if you disagreed with some of it, you have the right not to adopt the whole thing. But typically, that's what you do.
And for clarity, Andy's voting. Is that correct?
Actually, everyone will be voting except Tom.
And just to make it easier for everyone on the board, we have no objection if you want to adopt all of those conditions that are included in that recommendation from the Conservation Commission.
So the, so we can make the letter from the Conservation Commission part of the record? Do I need a motion to make this part of the record?
Yeah, it's going to be a conditions of approval. You can make it with, can be the five development points, get the conditions of approval, incorporate it into your decision.
Was also as evidence?
Right.
So we can mark this Exhibit A?
If you like.
Okay. Here, nothing else. Do I have a, a motion on the petition?
Motion to approve the petition and incorporate the letter from the Conservation Commission in full. There's five requirements.
Okay, I have a motion on the petition. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Just from my standpoint, I'm in the Conservation Committee. This came before us last night as the applicants indicated. From the Conservation Commission, this was, with the stipulations that were put in there were indicated in Exhibit A. We felt that it was a relatively straightforward application. It was improving the conditions on the lot, both now as well as in the future with the incorporation of the sewer hookup instead of the reliance on a septic. And with the capacity of the planned septic system, I'm sorry, sewer line, to accept the additional property just to the west of that, we didn't have any serious consideration moving forward. So as a member of the zoning board, I plan on voting in favor of it.
Anyone else?
I just, whenever the CRAC is involved, I feel like they have superior knowledge to properly issue permits, if you want to call it superior knowledge. But if they're involved, they're going to run through the hoops, you know? Also, with the application, that reason's involved.
Okay, with that being said, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
What did you need me to say? I'm sorry.
She just wants to hear.
Sure, sure.
Petition of Exit Strategy LLC for variance from Sections thirteen oh one B to allow a ten-foot buffer where twenty footers required along the northerly, southerly property lines for the construction of a gasoline service center with a convenience store, vehicle washing, and dog washing facility. Said real estate is located at nine ninety-one and nine ninety-five West Main Road and further identified as lots one fifteen and one sixteen and Tax Assessor's Flat one oh six.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Christopher Beam, Attorney Christopher Beam with the office at two ninety-four Valley Road in Middletown. And I'm here representing the owner of the property, Exit Strategies LLC. And the owners of that company, Eric and Nancy Petzel, are here, and they're from one oh three Wellington Avenue in Newport. As you, in the reading of the petition, the property that's involved is located at nine ninety-one, nine ninety-five West Main Road. And the proposal is to build a, basically a car wash with a convenience store and a gas station. And there is a, it does reference the dog washing facility, but that's a small amenity inside the building. And I know when we first proposed this, there was that question that was asked of me, including at the Technical Review Committee, Planning Board. Do we really need another convenience store type of development with a gas pumps and a car wash on a busy road such as West Main Road? Now, that's a fair question, and especially for this board. However, I think you're going to see, when we present the evidence, you're going to see that this is a much different type of development and proposal. And primarily is that the central use here, the really the premier use, the primary, primary use for my clients, is the car wash. And the car wash will, it's going to be a full-service car wash. It's going to be different than all the other car washes that you'll see, whether it's in town or on the island. And it's more upscale, if you can call a car wash upscale, but it is upscale, and it's, it's much more specialized. So this car wash, you'll see that you're not going to have inside a convenience store a couple of employees pushing buttons to operate the gas pumps to, to operate the car wash. On this site, you're going to have, in the neighborhood of eight to ten employees. And what they'll do is they'll take the car, they'll bring it through the wash. There'll be some automation, but actually, in the wash, there will be labor employees washing the car. And then the car exits, and then there's employees that, the employees who brought the car through will hand-dry it, and then also clean the interior and so forth. So it's a little bit different. And with that said, it's more of a, on this proposal, more quality rather than quantity, because a price of a car wash is probably going to be more in the neighborhood of twenty-five dollars or so rather than ten dollars. So the gas station is only three pumps, and the convenience store is really, it's where the people who are waiting for the car to be washed, dried, and so forth, sit in there. There's a dining room, dining area where they can sit. They can purchase food, bagels, that type of thing. So really, the focus is more on the car wash. Now, this matter is also, the plans have been through extensive review and vetting by a number of governmental agencies. You're going to hear from Lynn Small, and there's a sophisticated drainage system for the collection and treatment of stormwater discharge, and that eventually goes into a state system on West Main Road. And then she'll provide an opinion that it actually improves the environmental conditions that were exist, existing at the time, which were family homes. So there is a improvement on the environmental conditions. In terms of the traffic, we have a traffic impact study that's been submitted. We have a traffic engineer that will testify, and he'll testify there isn't an adverse impact on the traffic that will be in West Main Road or safety issues. So getting to the permitting, what the review, this has been reviewed by the Technical Review Committee for the town, which is thorough and quite good. The Planning Board looked this over. They have provided you with seven recommendations. And where, and this, and the zoning board, we're in agreement can, can adopt the first six recommendations. The seventh condition deals with the design of the building and the materials, and we're asking that this board just approve the plans as presented, and we'll have some testimony on that. The Conservation Commission heard it last night, approved it with conditions. And we will have to get into one of the conditions, is there was a concern that a variance wasn't asked for, for frontage, because it's in the, West Main Road is in a traffic-sensitive area. But I think Jack Kane will verify that it doesn't need a variance. It is, the terms of Section seven twenty provides that there isn't a need for the, for the variance. It's been scrubbed over by the towns engineer at my client's cost. They've looked at the drainage system, the traffic issue. There's been back-and-forth concerns that were addressed. But primarily, what's important is that what we're proposing here tonight needed a physical alteration permit from the, from the RIDOT. And what we did is we actually went and got approval for the, from RIDOT DEM before this hearing. So RIDOT has looked over both the drainage system and also the traffic, and has come back and will issue the PAP, the Physical Alteration Permit. And DEM has also reviewed the drainage system and has approved it. So finally, this is in the general business zone. The comp plan calls for commercial development to be along or within the commercial corridors that are existing now. This certainly does that. It's the, it's infill, it's redevelopment, it's a rebuild, and there's commercial, there's commercial complexes on both sides of this. So I think we're in the compliance with the comp plan with that. So my first witness will be Eric Petzel, the owner, and basically who runs the, the, manage the car washes.
Here's your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but it?
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Petzold, P E T Z O L D, and I reside at one oh three Wellington Avenue in Newport.
So the property in question, nine ninety-one, nine ninety-five West Main Road, Eric, is owned by Exit Strategy LLC. Is that right?
That is correct.
And both you and your wife Nancy are members of that LLC. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, what are your plans? You've heard my opening remarks. Just reaffirm with the board what your plans are for the site, the proposal.
Our main intention was to put a full-service car wash up here. Because being in the car wash business, we have three existing locations on Long Island, which is where I'm from originally. Seen a great need here for a car wash where they actually... Seen a great need here for a car wash where they actually, you know, full-service your car, where you can get your car washed and not have to finish it yourself. Where I'm from, nobody really does that. You know, it's pretty much every car wash, you go in, you pay for it, and they finish it for you, instead of drying it yourself. So that's what our intentions are.
So you feel that of the uses that you're proposing, which is the gas station pumps there, convenience store, that the car washing is really the principal use, is that right?
That is correct. The primary business is car wash.
Now, and that, but that includes times when you won't be able to use the car wash because of the weather. The gas station, the convenience store will be open, is that right?
That is correct. We're making a, a large investment here, and typically, like, you'll lose about a hundred days a year at least from inclement weather, and there's no revenue, and trying to keep employees employed.
Okay, so, the previously existing were two single-family homes, is that correct?
That is correct.
And they were torn down, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, in the general business, residential uses of homes such as that were not complying, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, let's get into actually the, the car washing, what you're actually going to do. And so, the cars will pull up to the, the car wash. The car wash is going to be in a building in the back, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, so, in this building, you're going to have, what's going to be located in the building?
So, we're, I'm also involved in the bagel business as well, so we figured a, a great convenience would also be a place where you can, you know, get a, get a sandwich and not have to sit down for a long period of time. So that's one of the uses of the bagel store. But the way the car wash works, you'll pull up, there'll be a greeter there, you'll tell them what wash package you like, you'll get out of the car, the greeter will then pull the car wash into the tunnel, and depending what wash you get, you know, it goes through. And if you just want it quick and you don't want the interior done, you know, you'll walk to the other side. It takes approximately five minutes to go through the tunnel. They'll dry it off for you, and depending if you want the interior done or just the exterior, you may wait, you know, ten, fifteen minutes inside if you're getting, depending on the package you're getting, and hopefully buy bagels and some other items. And you, when you get out of the car, you'll go inside, you'll pay, you'll get a paid ticket, and then when you exit, you'll give that to the, the finishers and get in your car and go about your day.
So the convenience store is really a, a area where the people who purchase a car wash will sit in there and wait for their cars, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the things you're going to sell in there, you've mentioned bagels, there's also car type of amenities, is that right?
That is correct.
Such as?
Air fresheners, little knickknacks for the car, a little, like, a lot of impulse items, candy, you know, stuff like that.
Okay, now, let's just get the dog washing part of it out of the way. So, you're going to have a, a dog washing facility, and that is self-service, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, on the plans, is that shown, you know, where that is?
I think that's what they, uh, di- Yes, it's a, I believe that's on the north side of the building is where we intend for it to be.
Okay, so that's going to be self-service, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that's just an amenity that you're providing, is that correct?
That is correct.
So people will probably necessarily dirty dog back-
Clean fur.
Now, so, this will necessarily, this means you've got to have more than a couple of employees to staff and to do all of this work, is that right?
That's correct.
So you think it's going to be, it'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or ten employees, correct?
That is correct.
Now, you have experience with car washes, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you said you have three car washes down in Long Island, is that right?
That is correct.
And how long have you been in that business?
Since oh eight.
So, we're talking about twelve years or so?
About twelve years, yes.
And those are successful, is that right?
That is correct.
So your business plan that you are proposing here in Middletown is time-proven, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we have some pictures coming up of what your existing facilities-
Sure. Yes.
And how about the, Emilio, the, what these car washes look like at this time?
So that's the, the interior. You'll see there's a lot of, a lot of grab-and-go stuff.
Hopefully that we won't have tipped-over machines.
Yeah, yeah. I might need a new architect there.
How about the exterior?
Let's get the exterior. And that picture there, that's, that was built in oh eight, and it still looks exactly the same. Do a good job of keeping it.
Okay, so what, what you're proposing in terms of, of Middletown, well, that picture right there-
Yep.
-is similar to that. So maybe if we could pull up the actual, I think you have three D renderings of what the Middletown facility would look like. So this is what you're proposing for Middletown, is that right?
That is correct.
And, well, let's get into, because one of the things you have asked for the recommendation of the, the Planning Board, it says that prior to permitting, they want you to submit elevations to show that you comply with section five twenty-one point two point C. However, you're asking the zoning board to make a finding on that. Now, so what you're going to have, this is a Tudor-style architecture, is that right?
That is correct.
And Emilio, your architect is going to testify, and that is considered traditional architecture, is that right?
That is correct.
And if need be, we have some pictures that show this style throughout some very significant buildings in Newport and in, in the area, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, let's get into the materials. So you're going to have real brick, is that right?
That is correct.
On the lower level?
Yep.
Okay, now, the other, I think the elevation plans describe the, that the components in here is a Dolbeen plaster, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's a form of cement or plaster.
That is correct.
How is that applied?
It's a three-part process. It's, it's a brown coat, then we do a scratch coat, and then then the finish coat.
Okay.
And then it's all on top of wireless.
And it's all, that's all authentic materials?
That is correct.
It's actually a cement and plaster, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, the, the wood, what is the wood?
Well-
I say, what is the wood?
Yeah, yeah. So originally, we used to use real wood, but since it's on top of, you know, stucco, not stucco, but plaster, it would always decay and require a lot of maintenance. So, we started switching it all over to AZAC. You can tell from the pictures, you know, it's, it's called the Frontier Style. It looks like rough-cut lumber, and it's pretty much maintenance-free, so we switched over to that.
And it looks like wood, though, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Unless you tap it, you can't tell the difference.
And the roof is asphalt shingles, is that correct?
That is correct. It's a fancy style. It's, it's called the Camelot Series.
Now, so you're asking the zoning board, and the, and the architect will also testify and answer questions that we want that, you are, as players, these are the plans you submitted to be approved, your, your design and the materials.
That's correct.
Okay, now, I want to just go back, because there were questions about it last night at the Conservation Commission, and I want to make sure whatever I said was accurate. The water used in the car wash, talking about the water used in the car wash, and so what happens with that?
Gets recaptured, so it all gets, it all gets pitched in the tunnel, and then it'll go out to like retention tanks. So it'll flow through three separate retention tanks. The sediment will drop, you know, and by the time it gets to the third tank, the water's, you know, a lot cleaner. Then from the third tank, we'll take that water, get suction back to the equipment room, and we use that in the, the beginning stages of the car wash. And we use that, and it gets filtered, and then it gets reused. So we recycle approximately like twenty-five percent of the water, because in the finishing stages, it, it just doesn't work as well.
Okay, so, and then it, it eventually goes out to the sewer, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so you have to be in compliance with the City of Newport's industrial pretreatment program, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, the gas station, the gas station, so there's only going to be three pumps, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, and you need to, that's regulated by DEM, you're going to have the fire protection, Middletown State regulating that, Department of Business Regulation regulates that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So what you're doing, you're, you're hiring a outside firm to do a design build that has experience in doing this.
That is correct.
And that is competent and familiar with, compliant with all the rules and regulations needed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, just, on the, the site, to the north and south of the site, there are two rights away, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that benefit this property. The one to the north is forty feet, and the one to the south is almost as, it's wide, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, the one to the north, that is basically been, it's, it looks like the parking lot of the business that is to your north, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, but it's been paved over, parking spaces, and then there's a fence between that property and the, what is it, East Bay Village, the-
That is correct, yes.
Over there. And then to the south, the right-of-way was basically part of the land of the person you brought the property from, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you're asking for a variance from the north-south buffer requirements, which require landscaping, twenty-foot landscaping off of that property line, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what you, your plans call for, ten feet, is that right?
That's correct.
And, but the, the land that's on the other side of your property line is the forty-foot right-of-way, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, I just wanted to, there were some concerns about the car wash, that there could be stacking that could flow back, blocking access and so forth. Now, do you expect that to happen?
No, we do not expect that to happen.
And this is based on your experience with your Long Island car washes?
That is correct.
And those are very busy, is that correct?
Yes.
And what is normally the amount of cars most you'll see in a line?
Usually typically never more than like eight cars. Once people see that, they just get turned off and they just keep driving by.
You also have employees on site, that if there is ever an issue in terms of long lines that could possibly block access, your employees can come in and correct any issues, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we have, and the board would like to see, and we do have pictures of other Tudor-style buildings in the, on the island, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, did you talk to your neighbors about this project?
I did reach out to them, yes.
Okay, who, who did you actually talk to?
Ken Alves, which is to the north, I told him about it, and he was pretty excited about it. And I forget the other gentleman's name to the south that owns the Advanced Auto Parts, and he thought it was a great idea.
So he's, both of them are aware of your, your plans, what you were doing at, on the site, is that correct?
That is correct.
And we've already discussed the planning board recommendations, which you're willing to comply with. You find if the zoning board adopts the first six, and you, but you want to be able to build in the design with the materials you set forth, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I have no further questions right now before I ask questions.
Why is it that you can't adhere to the twenty-foot setback? What's the hardship?
Is not enough room. Lynn Small, we can ask the project engineer, she designed this site, but basically there's, there's not enough room, but the other, it's going to be a right-of-way. It's on the north side, it's all, the, 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 it's required because the town considers that strip the right-of-way residential. So since the, the code believes that there's a residential use there, there isn't.
So if the right-of-way weren't there, you'd have enough of a setback, you wouldn't need the, the variance, is that correct?
If the, if the right-of-way wasn't there, I think we'd have a tougher ask for the variance. I think we still have somewhat of a problem.
Okay.
But we'd have a tougher ask because you have a residential use right, right there.
All right.
Emilio. Please write in. Just want to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but it.
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Emilio Sousa. I reside at twenty-three Brussels Drive in New Hyde Park, New York.
Mr. Sousa, are you, you're an architect, is that correct?
I am.
And how long have you been practicing as an architect?
Eighteen years.
And where's your office?
It's in Jericho, New York.
And your firm, you're licensed in New York, is that correct?
I am.
And your firm is in the process right now to be licensed in Rhode Island?
Right, we're seeking reciprocity in Rhode Island, correct.
And you, yeah, and you expect that to be-
Fairly soon it'll be, the process will be completed.
Now, you've been the architect for Mr. Petzel on the construction, the design, construction of his other three car washes, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, you understand what the plans for development are, is that correct?
Yes.
The car wash, the convenience store, the gas station, is that right?
Yes.
You designed all the buildings, is that right?
Yes.
And submitted the elevations?
Correct.
All right. Now, you also prepared that three-D rendering that the board saw, is that right?
Yes, correct, that is correct.
All right, now, Eric has in those other car washes, he has that same, similar branding or style, is that correct?
Yes.
And what do you call it?
It's, I mean, essentially, it's a Tudor-style exterior.
Now, have you reviewed the site?
I have.
And you've looked at the other buildings that are-
Adjacent to the site, yeah, and along the strip, yes. I mean, there's really nothing of any architectural significance, I guess, up and down that strip. It's mostly just, you know, sort of boxy, one-story, you know, commercial structures. Nothing really that has any sort of historic or architecture that maybe speaks to the, you know, the overall area of Newport or Middletown.
Now, have you, you reviewed the section five twenty-one point two point C of the Middletown, so- Now, have you, you reviewed the section five, twenty-one point two point C of the Middletown subdivision regulations, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, in that section, it calls for traditional designs using traditional materials or?
Materials that resemble traditional material.
And it also talks about depending on the location and the style you.
Correct, yes.
Now, would you call the Tudor style to be traditional?
Yes, I would. I mean, traditional in the sense that it's been constructed throughout the northeast and within this area, you know, for many, many years. There's a tradition of it, it's not traditional style per se, but it's, there's a tradition of Tudors being constructed.
And you identified a number of, when you saw?
Well, the Cary Mansion being one of them, the Tennis Hall of Fame, you know, being another one, and the house that, I forget the name of that one, the house that's up on the screen right now.
Fair Home.
Fair Home, right, so that, so the, that style does exist in the area.
In Newport, I assume.
Correct.
All right, so, and let's get into the materials. So, what you had proposed for the Middletown site, there is going to be brick, and that's real brick.
Real brick, which is basically a band along the entire first story.
Now, then there is a, it's identified on the elevations as adobe plaster.
Plastic, correct.
Okay, can you explain what that is?
I mean, it's a traditional plaster, it's a three-part installation. It starts off with a metal wire lath. You have the initial coat, which is the brown. You have the second coat, which is a scratch, and then the ultimate finish coat. It's a cementitious material.
And now the, what looks like wood is what?
It's a material, a company makes it by the name of Azac. It, it sort of cuts like wood, it's meant to mimic wood, but yet it's not actual wood. You can order it, they have a line called the Frontier Style, which the, sort of the facade or the face of the material is kind of nicked up, almost to mimic like a sawn-type lumber. And then generally we'll paint it, in this instance, like a musket-type brown, to sort of mimic the traditional battening boards, is what we call it, of some Tudor-style homes.
And now, these materials that you're proposing, this building is constructed, where's the cost fall in this, are these just more expensive than you?
I mean, look, if you could bring up the rendering again, it, you know, we could easily propose one of those other typical one-story structures, which certainly would be much, much less of a construction cost to Mr. Petzel. But, you know, Eric and Nancy are, they appreciate architecture very much. So, and for an architect, it makes my job a lot nicer to be able to go ahead and not just design a box for them, but to endeavor on, you know, a pretty significant structure, which, which, you know, pulls off of a certain architectural style. So from that standpoint, the, you know, the cost of construction far exceeds the cost if they were just to build a box.
Now, so you think, you've reviewed the provisions of section five, twenty-one point two point C, and you feel that what is being proposed is compliant with?
Yes, I do.
I have nothing for us.
I have just one quick question. The depiction that you have up here indicates a little water structure and some greenery. But I don't believe that will exist on the current, on plans, correct? Because there isn't enough space.
I think it was, I believe the landscaping, yeah.
So is there enough space between where the cars drive in and that, or I'm just looking at the plans in front of us? Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that what we're staring at here is realistically what we're going to say. And then in terms of the structure itself, you were just alluding to it, the overall size of it, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a large structure.
Correct.
It needs to be that tall in order to keep with the design cues of that style, is that correct? Because is there anything planned upstairs of apartments or anything like that?
No, no, no other additional uses, no, I mean, the car wash use itself has a lot of storage associated with it. The chemicals that go into it, so also, a good part of that upstairs could be mechanical space.
Okay.
Heating, cooling, etc.
But no planned offices or any apartments or anything like that up there at all?
No, not at this time, no.
It doesn't affect my vote one way or another, but are you locally sourcing the construction supplies? Or do you bring a crew in and build it from New York?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Petzel, but I'm under the assumption he's going to, he's going to use local builders to do it, yeah.
And the other car washes are that large?
Well, the other ones, they're on like half acres or smaller. This is an acre, so this is, I would say, could be a little bit larger.
They're, I don't know if they're quite as tall, but they are substantial.
How many square feet is that building?
Seven.
Seven thousand. The footprint, seven thousand, or no? Just give us a look. Sure. Seventy-four hundred seventeen. Seventy-four hundred feet on the footprint.
Yeah.
That's the footprint, seventy-four in square foot is the footprint.
You're asking for the footprint.
Well, no, I mean, there's nothing on the third, I mean, it's a huge, it's a very large looking building.
We'll get Eric back up.
Go ahead.
Oh, Emilio.
There's no lot coverage issue.
These existing cars, we've got a game of the ball, so I can't do that.
Okay, want to know what, is there anything we switched to the, for the proposed Middletown? Want to make sure there's no plans to do anything, there's no offices, there's no other uses upstairs.
No.
So what would be upstairs, what if anything would be in the upstairs area?
The storage and equipment rooms for all the chemical dispersments and, all the chemicals come in fifty-five gallon drums. Oh, sorry. So there's quite a large equipment room upstairs.
So those, those chemicals would be pumped up to the storage containers above, is that how it works? Or you transport those things actually?
There's an elevator there, so they get delivered in fifty-five gallon drums and taken upstairs. And then, you know, we set them up in the equipment rooms. And then it's a lot of computers and stuff too, that, you know, spray all the, you know, the different chemicals on to the cars.
So just looking at the size of this building here,
Yeah.
I'm assuming the structure you're specifically talking about is one in the back, not the pagoda-looking thing in the front, correct?
Correct.
And that is a smaller overall structure than the one you guys are proposing here?
Yeah.
Much smaller?
Much smaller.
Yeah. And that does have an upstairs and also has a basement too, for storage.
Yeah, we have connected.
Sure.
So behind this area, in this area is all the equipment.
Right.
For selection. Now, this would build to its maximum, to this particular direction.
And is the overall height, as I look at the plans, roughly the same height as that building there?
These would be smaller than the other.
The height as well?
Yes.
Okay.
But we designed it to look old, obvious.
Sure, sure, I'm sure it meets all that, okay.
So in the picture that you showed, you had a single vehicle going into the building to be washed? And on?
Do you want to see some of those?
You know, on the print here with that right-of-way on the, on the north side, you're showing like ten cars side by side going through the facility?
Yeah, that's, I think that's the, for the technical review committee, they wanted to see, and Lynn, I mean, they wanted to see stacking, what would be up to, I think, wanted to see stacking up to ten or?
Right, they're showing ten vehicles here, but they're side by side on that right-of-way. And in the picture that you're showing in, on the screen, where the vehicles are going into the building to be washed, is what?
Yeah, this, this is sort of a, a little bit of an artist's rendition here, so the focus of this rendering is more to showcase the look of the building and the materials, rather than the functionality of the site necessarily. So if there's a random car that's placed on this, that doesn't make sense, it's not really indicative of the flow on the site. It was just more of?
So the picture that you showed us is not what you're going to be built?
The picture, the, you thought?
Go to the picture where you show that truck going in to be washed. You have one garage door with one vehicle in line. Yet on this print, I see stacking of ten vehicles side by side.
This picture doesn't show the stacking, it shows the adage turning in. So obviously, there's really not much to see. This is where the cars will be stacking, on this side, and then they will turn in.
Got it, that clears up my question before. So this is that little bit of greener in the water space is, there's a cut through actually from the stacking entry lane into there. I think if you pull that up, I think it'll answer a lot of questions.
Is it going to be two vehicles going into the building at the same time, or one?
No, one. Eric, one vehicle at a time in the?
That is correct.
That looks like two to me. On the print that I have in front of me, it's showing stacking of ten cars side by side, two going around the corner entering the building. Oh, looks like it's going up to the building. Can you explain that to me? And then here on this print, it looks like a two-car garage door, not a single-car garage door.
Yeah, I'll, do they have stacked those, inventorying more cars there, then they probably take turns owning the garage?
No, I understand, they're showing, on the print, they're showing the stacking of ten cars, and then on the print, they're showing a double garage door.
Yeah, you know, can we, would you mind, to get around, if Lynn Small addressed that when she comes?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, she deterred plans and, I think we wanted to show also the stacking to make sure that there wouldn't be any kind of blocking of access to the site or back onto Westbury Road.
Hey, one more question for you, how fast do you process a car? Did you say fifteen minutes or?
Yes, so typically, depending on the wash package the people get, like if, you know, they want that, you know, the, armor roll the interior, do the dashboards and stuff like that, but we'll say typically, it takes about five minutes, oops, excuse me, about five minutes to go through the tunnel, and most of the washes, once it's at the exit, it takes about like another ten to twelve minutes to complete the wash.
So, up to twenty minutes or so, if they got a full package?
That is correct. And, and, you know, sometimes people want wax also, and that'll take a little bit longer, so.
What are your hours of operation?
It's, we plan to be open seven to seven.
Any other questions?
I still, I still don't understand why you need the variance for the side yard setback. I mean, it looks like, to me, you're maximizing the size of the building. It's clearly a small, a much larger building than what you have in Long Island. And if it's basically the same facility, why do you need this one to be so much bigger?
Well, the building, yes, or I would also.
Okay, so, so is it, is it a site issue that you need? Or is it?
I think?
With on getting out, I mean?
Well, for the building isn't, we don't need the variance for the building. The building, it's the buffer zone, because the town does consider that right-of-way, even though it's a deed-in right-of-way, it's no longer part of the residential property. The town still considers it residential property. Under the code, when there's residential property, you have to have a twenty-foot buffer off of your property line.
What's the commercial?
Commercial, I think it's?
Ten, ten foot.
You're taking this to a commercial use theoretically, and you're adhering to a commercial setback?
Yes, and Lynn Small, because of the design features there, including all the drainage and so forth, the parking, that's the other reason why we need the variance off the buffer. And it really is, it should be the commercial standard, in my opinion, but, I mean, there's?
The zoning, the zoning on each of those private right-of-way areas is residential multifamily. Zoning ordinance says when you have an off-street parking facility that lies within or abuts a residential use, residential multifamily requires a twenty-foot setback. Otherwise, it would be a ten-foot, as in a commercial zone. In this particular instance, those two little rights of ways that will never be developed for any kind of residential use happened to carry that designation, so it's more of a formality, asking for that buffer zone to be reduced to the ten feet. Because right on the other side of the buffer is commercial use on both sides. So it's really, it's a bit of semantics to have to ask for this.
Does this get cleaned up every ten years when the town looks?
If you wish to, if you wish to volunteer for the committee, you can do that. We're going to try to get people to do that.
Do you have any idea how that property, or that right-of-way was deeded?
It was deeded, it was created probably some seventy, eighty years ago when, when they subdivided. Was, I think, Jack, you had mentioned a new farm.
It was a farm that was subdivided.
And the wording in the deed states?
Oh, yeah, the wording, the wording allows, it used by clients, it's two lots. So they have the benefit of the south and the north rights of way, and it grants them an interest in the right-of-way. The right-of-way is created in, it says, for all purposes. And over the years, it's really fallen out of use. I mean, the northern property owner is definitely utilizing it as a parking area. East Bay Village has long ago abandoned any, any use of it. They have a fence up there, they have shrubbery blocking it. And the southern part was actually part of just a buffer that was almost incorporated into the yard of the former residential use. So it's definitely, we went over that with the technical review committee, planning, I've gone over that with the town solicitor, and so forth. So it is a deed-in right-of-way. And why the town's never changed it is probably because that's in the land evidence records. The town probably never picked that up when they're doing their rezoning, doing their comp plan, to know. It would have to be specifically brought to them to probably change it all to commercial now. Which probably should be the case, but that's only my opinion.
What kind of hardship would you incur if you didn't have that ten extra feet? Does it make the project not viable?
Yeah. No, the ten, the buffer. We'd have to redesign it, and then go back probably. Yeah, we could go if we, why don't?
I was just curious.
She's the next witness heading up, yeah.
Let me do it from my seat. Lynn Small?
Want to tell the truth and hold the truth?
I do. Lynn Small, Northeast Engineers, fifty-five John Cock Road. My office worked on the survey and civil engineering for the development. As you know, the site is currently, or was, until we demoed the buildings, the, basically two residential homes on rather small lots. It has commercial uses on both sides, and East Bay Village in the back. We have the proposed car wash with accessory use of a gas station, and then we have the bagel shop and the dogwash area included in the project. And we did utilize the two easement areas, or right-of-way areas on the north and south of the site. Can you go to sheet four? It's like a little delay. So, as you're, as you've? So as you're, as you've been aware, um, Chris went through the permitting process for this project. It's taken us over a year to get in front of you since we started this project. This, um, design required that we go to the TRC, which involved sending it to a third-party Crossman Review, as well as the Towns Review. We also had DEM Ripley's permit because we have over an acre of disturbance when you count those two right-of-way areas on either side. And then we have RIDOT physical alteration permit because West Main Road is a state road. From a drainage perspective, the site drains basically entirely to West Main Road. Uh, there's a small portion that goes to the south to that abutting property. When we did the drainage designs, we made sure that we specifically addressed volume and peak runoff to that obutter, and then the peak runoff to the DOT state highway. With this particular project, we were unable to achieve a reduction in the volume on the ten-year storm, which is part of the reason why it took so long through their process. The DOT made us analyze the entire drainage system from this site down to its outfall on Valley Road to demonstrate to them that even though we have a very small increase in volume going into their system because we have such a significant decrease in the peak runoff, it will actually be an improvement to their system and its existing conditions. One of the other things that we specifically had to address for this project associated with the drainage was mostly focused through the DEM because this is an impaired water body. The drainage system that we're tying into goes down West Main Road, all the way to Valley Road, turns left onto Valley Road, and then dumps into the Bailey Brook. Bailey Brook is identified as an impaired water body for bacteria. The standards that the state has, that we're supposed to adhere to for the removal of bacteria for this impaired water body is ninety-seven percent removal from existing conditions. What happens in that is you're... The best technology we have available for removing bacteria in a stormwater system is infiltration, and that only gets you down by ninety percent. I don't know how they came up with the standard for ninety-seven because there's no technology available that can even meet it. But we had that challenge in front of us for this project to try to achieve that. We were unable to get to ninety-seven percent removal. We proved that you can't actually do that. This, because we have an elevated water table, we cannot infiltrate across the site. So we have a lined system. Basically, anywhere that you don't have a building, gas pump, or a tank, we have a drainage system. So this is a very, very costly system. At the end of the day, the state agreed that we went and proved all of our hardships and did the best we could to make sure we reduce the bacterial loading for this impaired water body. It's very important that you understand, like the rest of the boards that we've been through, that while we don't achieve ninety-seven percent removal from existing conditions, we do have a sixty-seven percent removal from what you have today. So it's an improvement for your existing conditions for bacterial loading on Bailey Brook, even though it's a commercial use. The reason why you can't attain it is because you would have to put two systems on top of each other. It's almost like you ran the water through a sand filter, collected it, and then infiltrated it. I don't know how you would actually demonstrate that you can meet that. But we met with all the engineers at DEM, and they agreed that we did the most that we could. When I say that we have a reduction in the loading by sixty-six or sixty-seven percent, we're not taking credit for the doubled, um, sweeping that we're going to be doing on-site. Usually, when you have a parking area, you sweep it or vacuum it twice a year. We've agreed to do it four times a year for this site. It was Eric Beck's opinion. He had a report somewhere that demonstrated that the bacteria can adhere to the sands and silt that you end up in your parking lot. So the removal of that twice additionally will actually have some benefit, but we don't have a measuring device in place to be able to say that brings us up to eighty percent or anything like that. The site will have all of your utilities, electric, gas, water, and sewer. We do have letters of availability from everybody. The gas, I mean, the car wash facility does have a recycling portion associated with that. From my understanding, that recycling is best used at the beginning of the operation, but in order to get a good quality product, you have to use a fresh, um, source for the end. So you end up with, I think it was eighty, eighty percent, um, that you end up using fresh. But we do have tankage in place to collect sediments and any oils and greases prior to its discharge to the sewer system. This project would also be subject to review through the Newport pre-treatment system before we can get that approved to connect into the sewer. During the DOT review, we, um, looked at how the traffic circulation to the site, and the traffic engineer will go through this, but I just wanted to point out on this plan, you can see the directional arrows. The southernmost entrance is restricted, or curb cut, is restricted to entrance only. Now, stacking in this area, the town doesn't have anything in their ordinance that requires that we demonstrate any stacking abilities on-site. It usually comes up in the TRC, but the state requires that we demonstrate that you can stack up to ten vehicles before they would go in. The idea behind this stacking design is to get them into a position where they're past the point where you would go into the convenience store and gas station areas in case you weren't there for a car wash. As they get closer to the loading area to the car wash, they would alternate. This car wash won't have a problem making sure that type of system works because the person who owns the car is not the one driving it through the bay. That's my understanding. Is that accurate? Yes, so the staff that will work at the car wash actually take the car through. So you won't have people trying to get in front of someone else. Not that people really act that way, but just in case. We'll make sure, once you make that turn, there's definitely one car that's in front. Then we have a series of drying areas as you get to the north end of the car wash. That's basically where they'll put the cars. They'll do the drying, there's going to be the vacuum areas. And then the owner of the vehicle will come out that side of the building to get back into their vehicle after they pay, ideally. You'll see that the curb cut at the north end of the site that's on our property is limited to exit only. All of those were recommendations and requests from the DOT. We also put in another cut that allows access through the property that's to the north, or the right-of-way area that's to the north. Now, the right-of-way area that's to the north is the, um, the small strip mall thing that's Ken's. He has that entire area paved. In fact, there's a hairdresser door that's at the very back of the building, and you can see the little bump out for their door on their footprint. There's some parking there that, when we met with Ken to make sure we could share this area, he just made sure that we were going to maintain some of those parking spaces there. And that basically goes through everything, I think, from the engineering standpoint. I don't know if I addressed all of your questions.
Oh, you asked a question.
Going through the building, though, it's a single line, one car.
One car, yes.
So Mr. Curt asks, what... If we had a twenty-foot buffer off the property line, which is required, what would that do? Would it affect the circulation, the parking, and so forth? Is that correct?
Yeah, um, for this project, because we have those rights-of-way that we're using, having a twenty-foot buffer on the subject property doesn't make the project work better. It's also tends to be kind of something that's just in the regulations that almost shouldn't be for this site, just because those are commercial uses on both sides. So they wouldn't be subject to a twenty-foot landscape buffer. We're meeting all the building setbacks. We're also meeting the setbacks from the property lines with the parking areas and the asphalt. What we're not meeting is that landscape buffer requirement that is from the twenty-foot perimeter that's along property lines that are adjacent to a property that is residentially zoned or used. That's in the ordinance. The only residentially-used property is to the rear of this site, and we do have that twenty-foot landscape buffer.
Now, I did want to, uh, the comp plan, uh, does, and one of the policies give me a... When the chapter on natural and ecological resources go into... The goal is to protect and preserve the town's natural drinking water supply. So with this complicated, incomprehensive drainage system for the collection and treatment of the stormwater, would you say the plan is in compliance with that?
I would say yes. I mean, with the combination of providing pre-treatment water quality and then the significant removal of bacterial loading in this area where there are no provisions at all on this site right now, or any of the sites abutting this property, I think that we can safely say that, from that perspective, this site will be far above what it is today and the others that are surrounding.
And just the provisions and requirements for the special use permit under section 1107B and 902. You don't see any, uh, conditions that would result in hazardous conditions on the property, do you?
I don't, no.
And any conditions that are detrimental to the public health, safety, and well-being?
I don't. We made sure that we had a decent traffic circulation pattern within the site, suitable pedestrian paths through the site. In fact, during the design part that you don't get to see because we went through so many places before we got to you, we took ten feet off the building, and we reduced the pumps by at least one. It might have been two. I think we started with five, and we're down to three pumps. So we have reduced the scope of the project just to make it a little bit less congested.
And you don't see anything that would cause a nuisance?
I don't, no.
I don't have any further questions.
Anyone from the board?
Just one quick question. Assuming from a bad day standpoint, the tanker truck comes in and has a leak, a car has an issue with the gas pump. Can you just quickly take us through? I know they normally have the graded areas around the gas pumps, and they have the grooves that are supposed to capture it all. But once it leaves, once that liquid leaves the pavement, can you take us quickly through where that would go and how that's going to keep from ending up in Bailey's Brook down the street eventually?
Right, so you're saying if someone is pumping their car cold gas and it kind of overflowing all over the place?
That, or really, the tanker truck, and again, it's far-fetched, but if the tanker truck pulls in there and has a problem when it's discharging the fuel and getting all the safety, I'm sure all the safety stuff's going to be done. But how does, how does gas that spilled there, other than the drips that come off when you take your gas thing out, what prevention measures are in there to keep that from eventually getting in, going all the way down, and popping into Bailey's Brook?
So we do have oil-water separators in the drainage system so that we can separate any gases or oils that you get into there. During the TRC, we were also asked to put in a hood on the catch basins. That's basically a pipe that elbows down. But as you know, gas and oils kind of float. So that would only take water that's beneath that level. Now, as far as the pumper truck having a problem, there's so many safety provisions that they have on these tanks. Eric might be able to speak to this more, but my limited experience on doing the other gas stations in this town and other towns is that those tanks that they're filling, they're double-walled for leaks, but then they also have a huge reservoir inside in case something happens when they're filling it. So you really don't get those kind of spills. The most common spill you get is when someone's pumping their gas and the thing doesn't turn on.
So this, as it's planned and everything that you've put into this, this meets every gas requirement for fueling station, safety, and everything you've put into this meets all those requirements?
Yeah, I mean, there's additional designs that will have to be done by the gas station designer who goes through the DEM permitting, and they're going to look at all of those specific designs. We made sure the grading works so that that concrete pad can be installed correctly so that it maximizes the use of those surrounding trenches. You know, those little... And we did all of the other provisions that we could to make sure that we were protecting our discharge from including any of those oils and greases or gas that might leak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to witness the traffic engineer.
Good evening, board members.
Stick your name and address for the record, please.
Herman Peralta, senior traffic engineer from Beta Group. 701 George Washington Highway, Lincoln, Rhode Island.
And you swear the tell-the-truth, the hold-the-truth, and that's about the truth?
I do. Yes, Herman Peralta, P-E-R-A-L-T-A.
So, Mr. Peralta, you're a traffic engineer, is that right?
Correct.
And you just stated you are employed by Beta Group?
Yes, yes.
And, uh, and you're familiar with this area of, uh, of Middletown and the West Main Road corridor?
Yes, we actually just did one just up the road, Newport BMW.
All right, so you've done traffic impact studies in this area before?
Yes.
And actually, you actually live in Tiverton, is that right?
I do.
So you're familiar with this area?
I'm familiar with the Quinac Island, yes.
And so you're engaged by the own Accident Strategy LLC to do a traffic impact study?
Correct.
And, uh, the location of the project is at 991-995 West Main Road, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And you understand what the plans are for the property, is that right?
Yes, I do.
And you're familiar with the proposed access and egress from the property, is that right?
Correct, and we base that off of the egress and circulation.
Now, can you review the site plans prepared by the Northeast Engineers, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And what were you asked to determine, uh, with your services?
I'm sorry?
What were you asked to do in terms of your services?
Basically, we looked at the potential traffic impacts of the proposed development. As part of the PAP application, the traffic impact study was submitted and approved because West Main Road is maintained and owned by the state. Based on their approval, we basically concur with our traffic impact study. We did not receive any comments or any additional requests for analysis, so.
All right, and so to do the analysis, what did you actually do? You did traffic...
Yes, we did an inventory of the physical roadway characteristics of West Main Road. We obtained accident data within the project limits, which was from Access Road to Forest Avenue. We then estimated the trips that would be generated by the proposed development, and then analyzed the future conditions and made any recommendations for mitigation where necessary.
All right, now, and West Main Road is the primary access to the site?
Correct.
And once you did this analysis, did you reach certain conclusions about the impact this project may have on the traffic on West Main Road and the also safety issues that might feed into this?
Yeah, so based on the data we collected on the servicing roadways and the analysis we completed as part of the study, the future conditions as a result of the proposed development provides for adequate and safe access to a public street.
Now, uh, there are signals in the area, is that correct?
Correct.
And where are those located?
They're correct on, uh, there are one in Access Road, just south of the site, and then on Forest Avenue, just north of the site. They're correct on, they're, there are one in Access Road just south of the site and then on Forest Avenue just north of the site.
And so, the one at the Access Road is also, is a four-way junction which includes the
Yes, the East Bay Village, yep.
And what kind of significance does that traffic signal have in terms of the traffic that?
Yes. As you know, East, uh, West Main Road is heavily traveled during the commuter peaks in the morning and afternoon. It's, uh, it's basically, um, commuter peaks from the Navy Base, Newwick. So, the location of the, the site is actually favorable, having a, a signal to the north and south where during like clearance intervals, vehicles coming out from a side street or a driveway can take advantage of those gaps in traffic. Just one more thing to add, we were actually able to observe that gaps in traffic during the afternoon peak based on our traffic data counts at the adjacent plaza to the north.
And you also reviewed the interior circulation and parking?
Correct, yes.
And, uh, you had referenced it earlier, you, you, it was a need by the owner to to obtain a path or a physical alteration permit from RIDOT, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And they've, they've got, RIDOT has approved that application.
Yes, yep.
So, they did review it?
They, they reviewed the traffic impact study that we submitted as part of the PAP application, and there were no comments. And again, there was no request for additional analysis, and they concur with our scope of project.
And, okay, so you also, the town engineer, Crossman Associates, also reviewed your traffic impact study, is that correct?
Correct.
And they made certain comments, raised certain concerns, is that correct?
Yes.
So, there was a back and forth with that?
Yes, yep.
And, uh, and you received, uh, the favorable recommendation from the TRC and the
And the planning board also.
Have nothing further? Any members? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other witnesses. I'm, I don't really, I mean, briefly just summing up, I, uh, in terms, I think you've seen some compliance with the consistency with the comp plan on this in terms of protection of the natural resources of water, waters of the town. Also, the land use provisions of the comp plan also call for the policy for commercial development to remain in that commercial corridor such as West Main Road. And this is really, this project is infilling. It's a redevelopment. It's a rebuild which the comp plan speaks to. So, the plans aren't consistent with those provisions of the comp plan. You've heard the testimony from Lynn Small in terms of no nuisances. There shouldn't be any conditions that are detrimental to neighbors or adjoining property owners. It won't be detrimental to the public health, safety and, and welfare. I think it, it, it does benefit, as the traffic engineer says, the site, it's between two signals, signals, traffic signals that will provide gaps to allow easier access and ingress to the, to the property. The conclusions of the, our engineer and also RIDOT, the Department of Transportation, which had to issue the, the PAT, is that the, it won't have adverse impact on the traffic on West Main Road. You heard the testimony, the, the stormwater management plan is a very sophisticated plan. So, I think we've met the conditions of the special use permit in terms of the variance. There is a hardship if we had to comply with it because this is a very unique situation in terms of, of where we're located, even though the town considers those rights-of-way to be still part of a residential development, which they're, they're not, they're rights-of-way. We would have to comply with a twenty instead of a ten-foot setback. So, it's a very unique situation. And I think, uh, we've demonstrated a hardship that if we had to comply, it would be really almost annuity because you've got forty-foot rights-of-way before any other development, and the other development is commercial in nature. So, we ask, thank you for your patience in listening to the proposal. Oh, the only thing I would ask if, in terms of the planning board recommendations, if you adopt them, that you adopt the first six and the seventh, you approve the plans as we've, in terms of the architecture and the materials. And then the conservation, conservation commission recommendations, the first two fine. The third one just asked to address the zoning. I, I don't know if that's needed. I think Mr. Kane can say that we don't need a, a variance to the frontage requirements in section 720 because of the traffic-sensitive district. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the owner-operator to come up just for a couple more questions, if that's possible?
Please take the mic.
Just briefly, you'd indicated that the primary use of this facility is a car wash facility, correct?
That is correct.
And the convenience store area is for the car wash people to, to hang out in while their cars are being washed?
That is correct.
And your, I think you'd indicated previously, your locations in Long Island do not include gas stations, is that right?
That is correct.
So, can you just briefly explain how is the function of this car wash in terms of the flow of vehicles or the volume of vehicles per hour? Is this any different than the locations you have down in Long Island? Well, this, if your only, one car is going through at a time, are you physically able to do more cars here if that's the primary purpose of this business?
Physically, yes, we probably could do more cars if the traffic count here is much less, and the majority of the people are here only in the summer. The ones in Long Island, it's a steady traffic count, there's like fifty thousand cars a day, so we rely on that. But, um, learned from failure, the first ice cream store that we had inside the car wash didn't succeed because when the car wash is closed, nobody comes to the ice cream store. So, we switched it over to a like cheesesteak place and it's barely surviving. So, we would rely on the, you know, additional traffic and the business and not closing a hundred days a year if we have the gas and additional revenue inside, because it's a substantial investment, it's
Right, and that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
It appears to me that the reason that this structure is actually the size that it is and it's on a lot that's arguably twice the size of your Long Island lots, I believe those were half acre and you're saying this is an acre, is because of the increased revenue that's needed to sustain it, which results in the larger convenience store and the addition of the gas station plus, you know, the dogwash thing's kind of, that's not really a, a consideration in my mind. But I think that's really why the structure is so large, and the structure being that large in order to get the ingress and egress, that's what's really driving the hardship claim that you don't have enough room for the buffer, the full twenty-foot buffer. I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, if you have these same car wash-based facilities on much smaller locations down in Long Island, why do you need one that's on twice the size of a property that still requires variances in order to be a viable business?
It's a very good question and easy question. On Long Island, where we have those existing car washes, there used to be parking meters in front of the establishment. So, what then the DOT had found out was that it would become a nuisance because there would be people parking there and they wouldn't be able to stack in line. So, what we did was, we ended up paying the village for the use of those parking meters, what they could generate in a year. They generated that number and now we're able to stack in front of the building. So, those parking meters are removed and we would just stack in front of the building. So, we were able to, you know, accommodate those additional cars and not be a nuisance to traffic. On this premise, in case on those, you know, one or two days a year where you're very busy after a snowstorm, it's got to be like the perfect storm where, you know, it's, it snowed and now it's like sixty degrees on a Saturday. We would have been able to accommodate those days, even though they're very rare unfortunately, and stack the additional cause on the property, and I believe that was to, uh, you know, make sure that we met all the requirements for the DOT and didn't become a nuisance.
Okay, so the extra width by having the stacking and then because, I'm assuming you've got ten, it looks like drying stations?
Correct.
Five next to each other, it looks like they could put two cars in each.
Correct.
So, those ten
Are you mean on the entrance or the exit?
On the, on the exit side.
Okay, yes.
It looks like the drying and the finishing area, it looks like just as depicted, it looks like the size of them, you could probably put two cars bumper to bumper in five, five of those, which increases the width of the lot on, on that side as well. So, so really what it boils down to, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, is it needs to be this large of a structure with both a larger ingress area and suitably a larger egress area as well as the addition of hopefully enough revenue generated by the three gas pumps that's creating the additional width that's required, that's going to increase, that would encroach into the normal twenty-foot setbacks on both the south and the north part of the property. I'm just trying to wrap my head around how you're doing this in Long Island in a smaller area, that you're coming up here and asking for an even larger area in a larger area.
Yeah, and we're, you know, also doing, you know, a few more things. We're putting a, you know, a bagel store in there as well and the gas and the convenience and the, and the dogwash.
So, ultimately, it seems that although ideally the the car wash will be the primary revenue generating, it's, it's really, in my mind, I'm getting, I have a hard time getting past, this is really a gas station, convenience store with a really high-end car wash on the backside. That's no different than the car wash and, I mean, a convenience store and gas station that we have all over, but it's just a much nicer car wash in the back.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why this thing needs to be so, as large as it is. So, I think you've answered all my questions.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That being said, anybody would like to speak in favor or against the petition? I'll close it. Mr. Sullivan, we have to have a motion, well, the motion on the special use permit to exclude item seven on the recommendations and conditions for approval from the
The planning board?
Development Plan Review?
You can include
The waivers granted, number seven was, prior to permitting, revised building elevation shall be submitted to demonstrate that the proposed exterior building materials are in compliance with the requirements of section 521 dash two dash C of the Middletown Rules and Regulations Regarding Subdivision Development of Land as follows. Traditional architectural employees, architectural materials on buildings, faucets and roofs. Traditional faucets, materials including wood, clapboard, shingles, patent shingles, brick and stone and cast stone, depending on the architectural style and location of the building. Traditional roof materials including cedar shingles and slate. The faucet and roof of a building, particularly the front faucet, shall be visible, compliant with these traditional building materials. And then it goes on for, one, building exteriors and roof shall be constructed of or resemble traditional materials such as wood, clapboard, shingles, patent shingles, brick or stone. And two, synthetic materials and submaterials may only be used subject to the planning board approval. Samples of all primary materials shall be submitted to the planning board for approval.
And you want to, in the motion, exclude that?
The petition is asking that the recommendations and conditions all except seven.
Right. So, you can, as, as the motion, whoever makes the motion can include, incorporate paragraphs one through six into the decision of approval. And likewise with the Conservation Commission, if you wanted to ask, you know, comport with the applicant, you can incorporate bullet point one and three into the decision of approval as conditions.
And that's on the special use permit?
That's right.
With that being said, I'll entertain the motion on the special use permit?
Did anyone retain all that?
Would you like to take the
I'll, I'll take a stab at it.
Would you like to take the five-minute and, and go over this, or do you have a copy of this?
I'm comfortable with you just reading it.
That's why I wanted to read it into the record so that
Motion to approve the special use permit excluding item seven from the planning board's decision and including bullets one, two, three from the Conservation Commission? And paragraphs, was it paragraphs one through six?
One through six of the planning board recommendation.
Okay, so motion to approve the special use permit, including the first six paragraphs of the cons, of the planning board's decision and excluding the seventh item of the planning board's decision and including the decision of the Conservation Commission, bullet points one, two and three.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to interrupt. You need to vote on the variance first. The ord, I'm sorry about that, but the variance requires, the ordinance requires that dimensional variances.
We could still, we could make a motion on both, right, and then vote?
One at a time.
We have to, yeah.
Sorry.
I apologize. Variants, uh, motion on the variance, please.
Motion to approve the variance, second.
I have a motion and a second and discussion. No discussion.
I, I mean, I just listened to the counselor's closing and I agree with the points he made. The hardship is due to the unique characteristics of, of the land. You can make a really good argument that it's theoretically in a commercial zone even though it's residential, so they're using setbacks. They're really just using a commercial zone setback. It's not a prior, hardship's not a prior result of the applicant. It does fall in line with the purpose of a comprehensive plan of the town. The relief granted is the least necessary. And there's a host of other things in section five of the variances that I also believe are applicable here.
I agree with my colleague, the, the way that, that right away, both the north and south side was deeded to the, the town. The, the petition has shown the hardship in that. I'm going to be voting in favor of it. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now, I'll go with the special use permit.
Can I just, is that still in the record, what I said?
It is, it is.
On the special use permit referred to the motion that was made. We can do that. And a second? Any discussion on the special use permit?
The criteria of special use permit, there's no diminution of property values. I think it was established that it won't create a nuisance in the neighborhood. It's, it's compatible with the comprehensive community plan. It's, it's not going to injure the current use of the property. And I think the engineering presentation and all the other oversight will assure that there'll be no hazardous conditions or, you know, public health issues. I, I, I also think it's important to say that I, I, I also think it's important to say that, um, you know, a few other things that, uh, they're gonna create eight-plus jobs. Uh, I know this doesn't have to do with zoning, they're gonna use local contractors to build the building, and they're, they're certainly not building this building the, the cheapest way that they could. Uh, you could even make an argument that it, it sets a much better standard than your typical cinder block building that you see all up and down East and West Main Road, and, um, it may ultimately challenge others in the area at some point when some of those other buildings are redeveloped to, uh, put something up that's a little bit nicer and, uh, may last a little bit longer. I mean, I hope you succeed with everything you do, but I look at the building and, and if you didn't succeed, you'd, you'd leave a building behind in the town that someone else could move into and probably do something with, uh, and, and that's not a bad thing. From an engineering standpoint, there's better drainage there than, than there is right now, and it seems like every time something gets knocked down and, and put up, that, that we do a better job of, of the negative effects of, uh, you know, on the overflow and the water and rain.
So from, from my standpoint, um, just a hard time wrapping my head around, a building that size is, is, is for the purpose it's gonna be used for, but I, I really do appreciate and understand the efforts to, to put forth a building that, as my colleague said, is going to arguably, well, hopefully raise some level of standard for the, for the entire West Main corridor. As, as you guys pointed out, you know, there isn't a, an architectural style that's indicative of Middletown or representative of, of the area, uh, anywhere up and down, and for me, that's, uh, the, the, the issues I have with the, with the project itself are, are overweight by, by that. I really appreciate the fact that, that you're putting in the extra effort. Um, I personally think the building is, is too large, but that's, and it's just, it's a taste thing for me, it's, it doesn't prevent me from doing what I think is, is right for the town, so, uh, ultimately, uh, I'll vote in favor of it as well.
I agree with my colleagues. When I first looked at it, I'm like, wow, I mean, it's a, it's a very large structure. Um, but looking at it and, and the architectural point that you're making and going back in time with something so modern, uh, instead of just a square one-story building, uh, maybe a little set of presence for, uh, future developers or, uh, current land owners when they renovate, um, to take in that. It's definitely going to be something that's noticeable. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, good luck. Motion to adj... Second?
Second.
Can you just...
A... ...............................................................